Meeting. I will call the meeting to order. We are here for the October 19th continuation of the September 30th meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Our roll call this evening, we have six board members present online. However, one of our board members is without audio. So we have Lee Levy, Marilyn Altman, Ted Diesel, Keith Lyons, Chris Garvelitis, and Andy Conroy.
Yeah, Marilyn was signaling something. Can you hear?
Yeah, Marilyn's okay. She dialed in.
Good.
Oh, she dialed in on the phone. Got it.
Yes.
So, the first item on our agenda is 21-0819-03, the city of Norwalk, property located at 12 Noah Lot Lane. Mr. Conroy, would you, Secretary, please read the official item on the agenda?
Um, yeah, it is a continuation. We've read it into the record already.
Yes, we have. You're correct.
So. And the continuation begins now. Is Alan Lowe online?
Even members of CBA, excuse me, my name is Alan Lowe on behalf of the city of Norwalk. From our last meeting regarding Columbus School, proposed Columbus, I mean, not Columbus, I'm sorry, Cranberry School project, sorry about that. Our city's corporate council's office is in continued conversation with attorneys representing the neighbors. And they, and then our corporate council had requested that I request a continuation and continuance of the, of the public hearing to this November CBA meeting, which is, I believe, is November 18th. So just give them an opportunity to further come up with a resolution to the matter at hand, on hand.
Very good. So there will be no discussion this evening?
Yes, yeah, we're not intended to present anything new. They will like the opportunity to, to continue to see if we can find a solution.
Okay. Very good, then. I guess we will continue this item to our November 19th meeting.
November 18th.
Tammy, did you have a discussion with corporation counsel as to the timing of the continuation and when we're out of time?
Yeah, I did. They actually corrected my calculations and we, the decision must be made by November 27th. So having the November hearing will be fine, but a decision will have to be made then.
All right. So I'll have one more. I see Greg's joined us online. So we'll have one more meeting to discuss it with them and reach a decision or have their withdrawal, one or the other.
Thank you for the consideration.
Very good, Alan. We'll see you at the next meeting then.
Very good. Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right. Thanks.
Okay.
So we have seven members, right? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Yeah. So you might want to split up whoever you want to hear which case here.
Yes. We will need at least one member to step down.
Hey, Andy, I'm happy to drop today. I, um, I thought you needed me, so I was on. Otherwise, if you don't need me, I'm happy to drop from today's meeting. Sorry, that was for Lee. Apologies.
It's okay. I, I have no problem with that.
Okay. Anything else of a problem with that? No?
Nope. We will see you at the November, well, actually, will we see you on Thursday?
I need to double check. Do you, Tammy, I'll send you an email right after this.
Thank you.
And Tammy, you've had two people say they can't make Thursday?
That's right. I only have three confirmed.
All right. If you need me.
Thursday looks like we might need you, Greg.
All right, I can do Thursday.
Good.
See y'all later. Bye bye.
Good. Okay, the next item on our agenda is 21-0916-02, Martin Anekma Van Dyke. Hope I pronounced that correct. 34 Harborview Avenue. Andy, would you read the item into the?
I will. First of all, Martin, we're going to try to make sure we get your name right. Martin and Kema Van Chek?
Inka Ma Van Dyke.
Well, we're not even close.
I was partially close.
It was very close. It was very close.
You gotta give us a for effort.
Absolutely.
Um, the item is a variance of building height, 31 feet to midpoint required 33.7 proposed. And for a new single family residence in a B residence zone, property is located at 34 Harborview, District 5, Block 85C, Lot 18. Applicant seeks variance to allow additional building midpoint height for the construction of a new FEMA compliant, single-family residence. Proposed peak height complies. The original home was built in 1938 and has existing non-conformities. The property is located in a flood hazard zone, BE15. This home would be demolished and replaced by new construction. For the staff analysis and findings, the board has recognized hardship above elevating a structure and meeting the height restriction for properties located in flood zones. This request for a modest height relief only applies to midpoint and would likely be virtually imperceptible. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Would the applicant or spokesperson for the applicant, please come forward and identify yourself?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, I'm Liz Suchi, a partner at Carmody, Torrent, Sandec, and Hennessy. And I represent Mr. Van Dyke, who is on participating in tonight's meeting. Also, participating tonight will be Ben Turner, who is the project architect, and Larry LaPere, who is the civil engineer to answer some questions that you may have with respect to the site. And by way of housekeeping, neighbors were notified of the original hearing that was supposed to take place on the 16th of September. Then again, the hearing that was supposed to take place on the 30th, which was then continued to today. And I believe those notifications, green cards have been submitted to staff and should be part of the formal record. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The property is located at 34 Harborview. It's located in a B residence zone. And as the, as Mr. Conroy indicated, it's currently improved with a non-conforming, single-family residence constructed in 1938. At this point, if I may ask Mr. LaPere to call up the zoning location survey, existing conditions. So while he is doing that, hopefully he'll be able to. Some of the non-conformities include setbacks, lot coverage, FEMA compliance, minimum flood elevation, and things of that nature. Hopefully, he'll be able to get that called up pretty soon. Hang on just a minute.
Hope you can hear me. Hope the board can hear me. This is Larry LaPere. I am trying to share the screen now, and if you can't see it, please let me know.
We cannot.
We cannot. That's not a good sign. Let me see if I can do this.
Yeah, we see you, but not your screen.
Uh, not a good sign. Here we go. Let's try that.
There we go.
Wonderful.
So as you'll notice from this, from this zoning location survey, this depicts the existing conditions. The dwelling that has existed for 90 years doesn't comply with the side yard setbacks, parking, part of the parking for the one-car garages in the front setback. There aren't two compliant parking spaces, and the flood elevation, existing flood elevation is 11.4 instead of the 15 that is required. Larry, could you call up some of the photos while we're moving forward?
Sure.
So the proposal that is before you tonight, as Mr. Conroy read into the record, is to demolish this structure and in its place, construct a completely compliant structure as it relates to setbacks, coverage, parking, overall building height to the, the peak of the roof, and the minimum flood elevation is at or above the required 15 feet. So if we can call up some of those photos, perhaps?
We are working on that. My apologies.
Almost there.
And that's not it. Let me see if I can do it this way.
The new dwelling, while Larry's working on it, the new dwelling will be slightly smaller than the existing. The existing is about 1,950 square feet. The proposed dwelling would be about 1,890 square feet. It too would be, it would be two and a half stories with, which meets the maximum number of stories for the B resident zone in which the property is located. Two compliant parking spaces would be located behind the front setback. And it would be completely compliant, as I said before, 15 feet plus one foot for all ductwork. Uh, the photo that is down at the bottom of the screen. All right. Well, we'll see if we can, we'll see if we can come.
There we go. I think we got it now.
Okay.
And I'm wrong. There we go. It's over here. Any better luck?
We just have the, your overall screen from your, from your computer, not the photo. It's the photos at the bottom of the screen. There we go. So the first photo that you're seeing is, this was taken last week. It's a side photo of the existing house. The garage is in the front. This is taken generally diagonally from, in front of the neighbor's property, but in a northeasterly direction. Could you move to the next one? This is just for the benefit of those commissioners who have not had the opportunity to see the site. Again, this is a close-up of number 34. You'll see the garage, one-car garage, and that garage sits in front of the setback. Next photo. Again, another just head-on shot of the dwelling as it exists today. If you could go another one, just to give you a sense of what it looks like today. There it is again. One more, and I think the last photo gives you a view from the opposite side of the property. There we go. That's a view across the Harborview Association. They have their, they have a clubhouse next door. So this is the view from Harborview across their property directly southward to Mr. Van, Mr. Van Dyke's property. Okay, Larry, would you be able to call up the proposed zoning location survey?
Hopefully you had that.
Not yet.
So good?
Not yet.
Better be now.
There you go.
We got a problem.
Great. That's perfect.
Okay.
So the plan that's in front of you is the proposed condition zoning location survey. As you'll see, it's a proposed two-and-a-half-story residence, breakaway walls, piers, two-car parking underneath. It meets all the size, rear setback requirements, coverage, and two, two independent parking spaces behind the front setback. The only variance sought, as I mentioned at the outset, is to the midpoint of the roof. Under the B resident zone regulations, midpoint must be 30, but since it is in a VE zone, one additional foot is permitted. We are proposing 33.7, so a variance of 2.7 feet is, is requested. And that is largely due to the design of the structure, which Mr. Turner will describe further to you in just a bit. And we think that this request is, is very minimal in nature, largely due to the fact that the overall height of the structure to the peak of the roof is compliant. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Larry, if you could just walk the board through site plan and just some of the very basic FEMA requirements, drainage, and things of that nature. And then after Mr. LaPere, we'll have Mr. Turner.
Wonderful. So my name is Larry LaPere. I am a licensed engineer in the state of Connecticut. I have been an engineer for 40 years. Hopefully, that will imply that I'm a better engineer than I am a video operator. And so the site plan, this site is mostly impervious as it is today. We are going to demolish the existing house. We're going to redo portions of the site. The impervious area on the site will be reduced by about 2% of the whole site, or 130 square feet less, so that the runoff, the peak runoff and the peak runoff volume, or total runoff volume, from every storm is reduced by, by that amount. We didn't go into a detailed analysis because when you reduce the runoff coefficients, then every storm is reduced. So timing of it is, is identical, but just less of it. So the flood issues, as Liz mentioned, it is in a flood zone. We have to stay above it. I think Ben will get into some of the specifics of the elevations that he has set floor levels at, above FEMA requirements. And access is exactly the same as it is today. This area here is where we're going to access via a gravel driveway instead of a asphalt paved driveway. Utilities will be run through the same general area that they are today. We may wind up stubbing them off of some of the existing utility stubs. But generally speaking, the house is slightly smaller. The impervious area on the site is slightly less. And as a result, the impact of the development is slightly less than it is today. And I think that's the key for the overall picture. I'm happy to answer any specific question, Jeff.
Actually, I have an interesting question. We have had a situation up here in Silvermine. We have quite a number of gravel driveways. And I'm wondering if you've had conversation with DPW. They have forced a good number of homeowners up here in Silvermine to pave an apron of about 12 feet in length, in depth, actually, to contain the gravel from washing into catch basins. Have you gotten any comment about that?
Um, Mr. Levy, I can answer that just initially. This applicant.
I'm trying to zoom in, and hopefully what you'll see is there is an apron here, a concrete apron right in this area, which would serve exactly that purpose.
They've been asking for 10 feet. And that there be kind of a hum at the point where the asphalt apron meets the gravel to help retain that gravel from washing away.
Ben, Ben Turner here, architect for Mr. Van Dyke. I happen to have a gravel driveway in a very similar condition. This is a flat site. I've had a gravel driveway for over 15 years, and not one speck of gravel has entered.
Well, I would invite you to come up to.
Right of way. So it doesn't seem to be an issue. I don't, if you have a sloping site and some runoff, sure, but nothing, no gravel. I have a concrete apron. The required depth for me was two feet. I don't know why, when they started asking for 10 or 12 feet. The code is, we just got our CFO. It's, it's 24 inches, and it works fine.
Well, I was just asking if DPW made the comment.
Mr. Levy, can you hear me?
Yes.
I will, thank you. This proposal will also need to be submitted to the zoning commission because the property is within a certain distance of a coastal resource. So as part of that submission, it will also need to be referred to various city agencies, including DPW. And if that ends up at that time, then, then we'll certainly address it at that point. But as, at this stage, referrals to city agencies such as DPW or the Water Department or WPCA are not required, that would be the next step. And if, if it's something that DPW is requesting, I'm sure Mr. Turner, Mr. Soli, excuse me, Mr. LaPere, will have those discussions with DPW at that time. But thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Very good. I just asked the questions. Please continue.
Thank you. If you have no other questions of Mr. LaPere, then I'd like Mr. Turner to make his presentation as to his design and the concepts and anything else he deems appropriate to share with you. Mr. Turner?
Hello, everybody. I'm going to share the screen, but I think that Larry has to, there we go. Okay.
I just stopped. Yeah.
Great. So this is a 3D model of the proposed residence. I'll, I'll pan around the, the building so you can get a feel for. Can everybody see this?
No, not yet.
No.
No. Yes, no?
No, no.
Can anybody see anything?
Yes, but not what you want us to see.
Okay, let's see. Now?
No.
No. Okay, that's a problem. Let's see. Can anybody see anything now?
No, no.
No.
Just you.
Just me. Okay, that's not doing much good.
Larry, can you possibly screen share Ben's plans?
I, I'm going to try to do that. Yeah, but then I've got your plans here. And let me see if I can get these up. This may take a second, but. I think this is the one we want. How are we doing?
We're doing well.
Wonderful. Ben, you let me know when you want me to scroll.
Can you, can you see anything?
Yes.
I see your architecturals. Sheet one.
Oh, sheet one. Okay.
I'll scroll wherever you want.
Yeah, it's Larry's screen that's being shown.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. I, I was hoping to show a 3D model of the building.
That's a problem. I don't have that.
Yeah, I know. I have it, but for some reason, the share screen is not working.
Well, how about just scrolling to some elevations?
Can you scroll down to his elevations?
Yeah, let's just, let's, let's just talk about the elevations.
Okay.
There we go.
Or the section.
Do you want us to start there?
There you go.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay, so this is a section, two sections through the building. The one with the angle is the sloped roof in question. The peak of the roof is, has been discussed, conforming. The low point is actually, was the basis of the design, was to try to bring the scale of the building down to make it as, as small as possible towards the street. So I think that's been achieved because the, the first floor has to be almost 12 feet above grade, which is quite a bit. So that starts to condense the two, two floors that we have. So we've got a very low point for the street elevation, and we've got a conforming peak for the high point of the roof. And if you go to the, the next section, you can see that the roof is actually, the high point of the roof is only half of the structure. The other half is approximately half of the surface area of the roof. So we've got a situation where we've gone, made the roof as low as we can on the street side, conforming to the peak, and the midpoint happens to be non-conforming. That, that's the, that's the, the basic situation.
So we're basically looking at the roof strictly over what I would call a bulkhead.
Yes, exactly. The high point is, is including a bulkhead for access to a roof deck. Maybe Larry could scroll down to the elevations now? Yeah, so you can see what's going on there. That, that's the elevation facing south. So you can see the high point of the sloping roof, and then there's a, the, the flat area is the parapet of the, the roof deck facing east.
Do you want the next sheet, Ben?
Let's look.
Yeah, there we go. Okay, here's the other elevations.
Yeah, so this is facing the club, and you can see that from the club side, it's even lower, that you have more of the, the roof deck showing, which is well below the, the maximum peak there. And then if you go towards the street, you can see it's further sloping down towards the street to minimize the 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 appearance of the building. And again, I wish we had the 3D because the fact is, from the street, you can't see any of the roof. There's probably nowhere on Harborview Avenue that you could even see the roof. The sloping roof.
Does anyone have any other questions of either Mr. Turner or Ms. LaPere or Mr. Van Dyke?
Not I.
Neither do I.
I, I can, by the way, share. I have the PDFs of your 3D images, Ben.
Oh, great.
If you want, if, if I can try and share my screen. I will stop sharing.
Okay.
While Mr. Van Dyke is doing that, I just would like the board to know that I believe there are two letters of support in the file. One from a direct neighbor on the opposite side of, of the proposed dwelling. And that was from Linda Kreicher, and then a neighbor across the street, Emily Junta at 33 Harborview, had also submitted a letter of support. Those should be in your file.
Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
I can, I can see it, so I'm assuming everyone can. Yeah. So Ben, let me know where you want me to show specifically, if there's a specific angle.
I think this, the slideshow that Martin's scrolling through is pretty evident. Now we're looking, if you, we're looking at the, the street elevation, and as you can see, you can't really see the roof. Yeah, so that's, that's another example. There's another example, street view, another one, 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 another one. So the first views were the bird's eye views, just to give you an idea of the structure. But you can see from these street elevations that you really, unfortunately, I think it's going to be a beautiful roof, but it's not going to be visible. There. These, yeah, this, this shows you the extent of the roof. It's an interlocking shape. The, the north portion of the sloping roof is, you know, half the size of the southern portion. So it's really just the. the, the part that extends to the bulkhead, which makes the midpoint of the roof non-conforming. Again, the peak is conforming and we've minimized the, the roof edge at the street. So that's pretty much the story.
Anyone else?
What is the? Sorry, what is the material of the standing seam roof?
Well, a standing seam roof is always metal, but that, that's yet to be determined. It, it could be, it could be shingle. It could be, I guess, it's either going to be shingle or a metal standing seam roof. Again, there, from the water, from the street, there will be nowhere that you could ever see this roof. So the material, unfortunately, I think if it's a, you know, either a shingle or a standing seam metal roof, they're both beautiful roofs, but nobody will ever see them.
Does any board member have further questions? Not I. Neither do I. Are there, is anyone online who wishes to speak in favor of this application?
And I'll just remind people, there are three people from the public who are on the call. If they'd like to speak in favor of this application, please use the raise your hand feature. Or there is one person dialed in on a phone, press star nine to raise your hand.
Conversely, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this project? Hearing none, we'll ask the applicant if they'd like to make a final statement.
Before you do that, just remember that we did receive letters of support from at least two neighbors. 33 Harborview and 38 Linda Christner and Emily Guanta.
Would you like to read those into the record?
Well, we could. They're very, very short.
Please do.
My neighbor, Martin and Game of Dick, Ben Dyke has shared with me his plans for new dwelling at 34 Harborview Avenue in Norwalk, Connecticut. I have no objection to the plans, which require the coastal area management application or variance requested and support his application. That's from Emily at 33 Harborview. And my neighbor, Martin Van Dyke, has shared with me his plans for new dwelling at 34 Harborview Avenue in Norwalk, Connecticut. I am his next door neighbor and I have no objection to the plans or variance requested and support his application. This is from Linda at 36 Harborview, not 38. That's it.
Very good, Mr. Secretary. Again, I'll ask Ms. Suchi if she would like to make final comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just briefly, we've specified the practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships in the application. But I think it's evident from Mr. Turner's presentation that the architectural design does present those challenges and the request is very minimal in nature. Moreover, since the peak of the roof is fully compliant with the regulations, I see that, that this request is appropriate and hope that you can act upon it this evening and, and approve the variance as requested.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we shall move on to the next application we're going to hear this evening. It is item 21-0916-03 Norwalk SNFF Acquisition Group LLC, 22 Prospect Street. Mr. Secretary?
Yeah, this is a variance of rooftop mechanical setback and screening requirement for existing commercial building in a D residence zone. Property located at 23 Prospect Street, District 1, Block 19, Block 13B. The request applicant seeks variance from setback in screening requirements for rooftop units. Background, Casino Care is skilled nursing facility that has been granted multiple variances. 1964, 67, 69, 70, 71, 72, and 82 for expansion. Most recently, the board granted an additional variance with conditions in 2020 to allow the expansion of the parking lot to accommodate in-house dialysis. Conditions included requiring installation of as much landscaping as the site can handle. Staff analysis and findings, the applicant asserts the existing ground level fencing provides screening due to the viewing angle and height of the building. However, this is our staff. I do not find that a hardship has been identified in this case.
Very good. Will the representative for this application please identify themselves?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Jay Russell. I am the CEO and managing partner for Casino Care at Norwalk. As Mr. Secretary have stated, we are a skilled nursing facility located directly across the street from Norwalk Hospital. Today, I'm being joined by my project architect, Mr. Ira Shilton, and also my project general contractor, Mr. George Tyway. For the record, Mr. Chairman, all the abiding neighbors have been notified. And the purpose and the reason why we are here today is because we're seeking a variance for the rooftop mechanical setback and screening requirement for existing commercial buildings in a residency zone.
Good.
Shall I continue?
Please.
Okay. So as Mr. Secretary has stated, I know that we are, we're here today to discuss the variance and the setback. The reason why we brought this application to the zoning board is because currently the nursing home has a, a fence that runs alongside the sidewalk of the nursing facility and the fence is roughly six feet high, six feet high in, in height. And because of the height of the fence and the recessed nature of the building, all of the HVAC equipment on the roof is currently and will remain screened from Prospect Street. We do have a, we do have a, a, a presentation, a slight presentation that actually can show the board what we are referring to when we try to discuss the fact that all the rooftop units will remain screened from Prospect Street. And I can share that and I would also ask Mr. Shilton and Mr. Tyway to provide the insight as well.
Proceed.
You want me to share the screen or do you want to share the screen, Jay?
All right, can you share the screen?
I can. I think I can, yeah. All right, let's see which one I want. Yeah. Right there, I guess. Yeah, there we go. I'm going to zoom into this portion of it. That's a section through where we're putting the renal dialysis center in the vacated wing of the nursing home to service the, the clientele that's in the nursing home. Here's the new mechanical units. They're drawn to scale. I've actually got cut sheets if you want to see those. There's the elevation of the street. And there's the projected visual view from the sidewalk, somebody walking along the sidewalk on the opposite side of the street. And as you can see, the mechanical units will be below the six foot fence line that comes down and around the building. In floor plan or roof plan, where because of the low ceiling heights of the old nursing wing, we're having to route some of the ductwork on the roof. But the units that we, we were looking at are here and here. These little units are just the multi-splits. They're very small. And the fence is this dotted line that goes around and it is existing. That's the six foot high fence. Here's Prospect Avenue and here's the drive that goes down. I've got some photos taken from the rooftop. And photo A, I'm standing in the driveway. You can see the six foot fence. There are, at this point, there were mechanical units on the roof. This is before we began any demolition of that wing. So the existing units were still up there. You can't see any of the roof. Photograph B, I'm actually standing on the other side of the fence over here and looking back toward the fence. So you can see how much elevation there is. There's more, there's the six foot fence and there's like another two and a half feet here. Photograph C is standing back here looking toward the backside of the property. The new parking lot is actually going in the back area behind this end of the building. Photograph D is looking at the fence right here at the corner where the drive initially comes into the property. And photograph E is looking back toward the back. Oh, photograph C is where the transition in the roof, where the wing was abandoned. And you can see the fence beyond and you cannot see the street. There's a steep embankment that is about 18 feet and the building actually sits down in the bottom of the embank. Think that's what I've got to present, Jay. So I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Ira. So, Mr. Chairman, as Ira has showed, and, and before we continue, I wanted to know, Mr. Tyway, do you have anything to add to Ira's presentation?
Yes. I think there's one thing that we would like possibly to share. I don't have it on my screen, Jay. But I believe Ira does or Tony does have it. Pictures from the street, physical pictures showing the fence, so the board could see on the street side, the vinyl six foot fence from the street directly. I think Tony might have those pictures if he's available to upload them to do and share his screen. If not, we will be glad to email them to the board for record.
Hang on a second, I might be able to find it. Sorry about this. Hang on one second. That's not from the street. Hold on.
If I can share my screen, Ira, I have it on my screen already.
Okay, let me get off and I'll let you take over, Jay. George, thank you.
Can everybody see my screen?
Yeah.
Oh, beautiful. Yeah.
So this is a live shot from Google Maps. You can see driving on the street. This is the fence that we're talking about with Mr. Shilton was talking, what it's referred to in his presentation. When you look across this fence, you will be approximately, if I'm not mistaken, Ira, correct me if I'm wrong, at least six feet above the top of a rooftop units on the roof. In fact, if you go back one step here and you look, you can even see the top of the building and you can't see the roof itself because it's so much lower from the fence.
And those mechanical units that are actually shown right there are in the wing that's across the parking lot over the kitchen. They're not even over our wing. Our wing actually sits about 10 feet below the top of that fence.
That's correct.
Yeah, the roof line actually sits below the, the foundation of the fence.
Jay, I think that's it for me, unless if you would like me to share or add anything else.
Oh, I, I do appreciate the presentation and just for the record, Mr. Chairman, at this point, again, very short presentation, but we hope that we were able to prove to the board and show the board that our current, our current petition to the board to seek a variance has been met to the board's discretion due to the fact that the current roof sits well below, well below the street level. And the current fencing that we have will allow anyone from the streets or any of our neighbors that are looking to the property to see any of the rooftop units and notice that they will be screened behind our current fencing.
Okay. Any board member have questions of the applicant? Is there any member of the public that wishes to speak in support of this application? Is there any member?
Looks like Marilyn had a hand up.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead.
Just a question. One moment, one moment, one moment, one moment. So is that fence going to remain looking like that? Because I've driven by and that's actually true. It does cover all that, but is that the way it will remain looking with all the graphics? And just curious, is that the way it just remains?
Yes, sir.
And is that within our code?
Just, just to make sure I understand the question correctly, you're asking if there are any changes or any plans to change the current fencing around the facility. Currently, there are no, there are no plans to change the current fencing around the facility. We plan to leave things the same in order to keep the rooftop units shielded and blocked from the general public.
Thank you.
I think also, just to interject, I think Marilyn was asking about the banners or those, so Marilyn, the banners are still there? Because those would be illegal signage.
Is that, is the question about the banners or the fencing?
I think both.
Well, so the banners, so the banners are temporary. We put the banners up because we're doing construction on the, for the dialysis center. We do have plans on putting, replacing the banners with the sign once the dialysis center will be built in a, in a few months.
Thank you.
Any further comments from board members or the public on this application?
I had a question for Tammy and it may be because I haven't located your staff findings. What, what was the reason behind the recommendation?
I, my, I found no hardship case made, but.
Okay. I didn't know any more than what was read out.
I, I have a question. What would be the second option? If this variance isn't granted, what would be the option? If this variance isn't granted, what would be the option? And Jay could answer this or Tammy.
Well, I think the option would be and from, just from what I take, there would be an option to put a fence around the, on the roof of the skilled nursing facility when there is no need for the fence because the purpose of that fence around the rooftop units will be the same purpose that served as the current fence that's on the property.
What about, how do you, what about the setback?
The current building.
Is that the only issue here?
Yeah, that's really the only issue, the current building is already over some of the setback lines. And it, and the, on previous occasions, the zoning board had already granted the variance on these setbacks. The, the major issue is screening these mechanical units and George can probably speak to the cost of that. But if we can avoid the cost, I mean, the nurse, the nursing home business is a, you know, the margins on the nurse, keeping the nursing home going is, you know, pretty slim, as everybody realizes it's very expensive to keep somebody in the nursing home. So what we're trying to do is use the existing fence to screen the mechanical units rather than beefing up the structure and putting a fence that's cantilever off the top of the roof. The whole roof currently is wood frame construction, so there would be considerable structural improvement to get that screening up around those units. And then we would have two screens around the units. George, if you want to speak to that a little bit, you're more welcome to.
So Ira is correct, to do this, we would need to do some structural modifications and steel support columns inside the facility. That would have a hardship into the floor flow plan, allowing the staff to be able to see patients without having any additional columns or structures in the way. But I honestly think the, the more significant hardship is because our fans provide what's needed by code or by zoning, adding the additional fencing is going to create some additional hardship for the maintenance of those units. To put a fence around those units, it's a big unit. It, to have some restrictions on having to change the filters frequently as required in this environment, which is an eighty percent efficiency filters and maintain the units. Fencing on those units would add some additional, not necessarily work only, but the maintenance issues to be compliant with the DPH code and make sure that the filters in the units are operational as required.
Chris, does that answer your question?
It does.
Okay. Any further comments or questions on this item? Well, hearing none, I will close the item. And we will move to the.
Hold on, hold on, I didn't realize I was silenced. I just wanted to comment that the configuration of the lot with the building being so low favors having fence around the whole area rather than a fence up on the roof. And this isn't quite a hardship, I think it is a practical difficulty. The thing is, we could condition an approval that requires the fence to be in the place it's in and to be the height that it is.
I would also suggest that part of our approval, shall we move in that direction? That we require that the fence be maintained in good condition to maintain its screening capabilities.
Yep, good.
Anything else? Then I will close out this item and we will move to our discussions on the two items we have to make decisions on. And as we normally do, working in reverse order, we will discuss twenty-three Prospect Street. I really have no issue with the fence in place of rooftop screening. I would like to add the condition to our approval that the applicant guarantee that this fence be maintained in perpetuity in good condition to maintain its screening capabilities.
I agree.
That would make me happy.
Okay. Any further comments?
Is that a motion?
Keith, you're on the screen, so go ahead and make a motion.
Yeah, I'll move it as you said.
Moved as stated.
A second.
Okay, all in favor of approval of this application?
I. I'm going to have six approvals out of a five board, that's okay. Tammy, just record that there are six approval votes because we need five. And then if anybody would look back at the record, they know we met five.
Yep, will do.
Okay, this item has been unanimously passed.
Appreciate the board's approval and the time you've given us tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, we shall move on to item two-one dash zero-nine-one-six zero-two thirty-four Harbor View Avenue. Discussion?
Well, I think that, 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 that's just an oddness, there's a roof design that probably wasn't contemplated when the code was written and there's really not a problem with the roof. It's fine the way it is.
I think the, the architect has made a very good effort to work the bulkhead that provides access to the flat roof into the design, it's very unobtrusive. And I think it's a very good solution.
I don't know, there any conditions need to be set, so I'm going to approve the variance as requested with the notation that looking at the zoning code, this was really not anticipated and it really does fit within the compliance of the code.
I would agree and I'll second Andy's motion. All in favor of the application? I. Tammy, we have a unanimous approval.
Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thanks.
Very welcome, Ms. Suchi.
Thank you.
I don't think we have anything else on the agenda.
Well, we did get one submission from a person that wanted to talk about zoning codes and ZBAs and sound. And I think that got sent to all the board members.
Yes.
And I made a comment about it just because if you go to the sites that are mentioned, there's really a pretty short description of what the ZBA does and what a variance is, but it's much longer than what was shown to us, so it's a good idea to know that what was said on the sites is pretty much what our attorney, court counsel tells us, so the very minor differences.
Well, as I read through it and I have faced many design issues over the years with sound generation and sound absorption from topography and landscape. I found it interesting, but there, there is no exact solution to these problems.
Can I just interject, I hate to do this, but could we just save this discussion for the next meeting so that we, we don't have anyone say they weren't part of the discussion or access to?
I have no problem with that.
Thank you.
So I'll make a motion that we adjourn this meeting and hope to see you all on Thursday evening for our regular October meeting.
So who here is able to attend?
I.
I.
We got a quorum, thank you.
Okay, good night, everyone.
Thanks, everyone, sorry about two meetings.
It happens.
See you Thursday.